Welcome. February 27th, City Council Meeting, start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our state to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Sleet the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mayor Thorpe, you call the roll?
Counselor Scott?
Here.
Counselor Yem?
Here.
Counselor Chow?
Here.
Counselor Dakota?
Here.
Counselor Getchea?
Here.
Counselor Janess? Counselor Leahy?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Counselor Noon?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Mayor Rourke?
Here. We've got to Janess on Zoom. Mr. CFO, you got him? All right, great. Mayor's business 2.1, communication and Zoom participation. Motion accepted, placed on file by Counselor Leahy, seconded by Counselor Getchea. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Section 3, 3.1, minutes of the City Council regular meeting, February 20th, Finance Subcommittee for February 21st for acceptance. Motion accepted by Counselor Mercia and seconded by Counselor Scott. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes, placed on file. Section 4, City Council motions, 4.1, Counselor Getchea requests City Manager to provide the City Council with a plan for the Lincoln School playground replacement. Seconded by Counselor Leahy, Counselor Getchea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, that playground over there needs a lot of work. If they can put up the pictures on the screen, when you look at the slide when you come down, it's cracked and kids are hitting it. I mean, it's just the paint's deplorable, everything over there. Is there any plan for that playground to be replaced? Do you know?
Mr. Manager?
Fan?
Ms. Rourke?
Great. Yes, there are. Plans are actually available online if folks are interested in looking on the City of Lowell website on open space projects. The Durkin Park project is planned for a $720,000 renovation that'll be started in FY25, which we're going to be paying for fully through community development block grant funds. So we have already bid out the design work for that project and it's ongoing.
So if we know this is that deplorable and in this condition, we should shut it down? When you look at that slide and how it's up and someone can get cut on it, they should be being inspected. Do you, can you put in your report when you come back with it, how often those playgrounds are actually inspected and who's doing the inspections? Because that should never get in that shape over there when you look at it. And I just think that somebody's going to get hurt and we know about the issues. But I think FY25, if there's funding available that we can move it up quicker, if there's a way we can get that designed out and get done faster, if you could please look into that. Thank you.
Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Counselor Getchea for putting his motion up. Again, I had similar motions on school playgrounds, including the Lincoln, as well as other schools around the city. And as the Assistant City Manager mentioned, these updates are on the website. Through Mr. Mayor, to the manager, to the Assistant City Manager. All the other playgrounds, all the school playgrounds, I know they're in the works, are they update information on the website as well?
Close.
I meant that the few playgrounds that we requested in the last term and before to have it upgraded.
So the section on DPD's page that includes information about school playgrounds includes information about the playground that's being done at the Riley School and at the Shaughnessy. But those are projects that are particularly being managed by DPD. So there are a number of smaller playground improvement projects happening at school playgrounds that are actually being done by staff at the school department. And so that information is not something that we update on DPD's page, but we could talk to them about getting updates in order to add to that.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great because I know it's a lot of playgrounds at many different schools that's being upgraded. Just to make sure that we get all the schools' update or the upgrade update at the same time, that'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you, the manager. When this comes back, could you make sure that we're on the same page with the school sides? This is, again, this has been going on before you got here and this is getting a little monotonous. It's been going on for five years. So can we make sure who's responsible for what, school or city, and make sure they get done? And just a quick side note, I mean, maybe I didn't go through the proper channels, but they told me this was going to be done two years ago. So it should have at least been washed off, you know, pressure washed and cleaned up. And now the slide's broken, so maybe we do shut the slide down. But school committee woman Darty has had this on her radar for five years now. So just let's wrap it up and everybody will be done and we'll have the playgrounds in order and ready to go. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I believe last term, we discussed the Green Elch improvements. And there was a motion response that came back from DPD that was pretty in-depth and it detailed pretty much what playgrounds on the school properties are responsible, are the city's responsibility and which ones are the school's. So I don't know if that's something maybe you could bring back.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, that's something we can bring back to let everybody know what's happening. And in regards to this, this is, you know, some of the things, we're trying to get better actually with updating all of the information on our website and making it a little bit more user-friendly when it comes to, you know, particular playgrounds, as well as who is responsible for which playground and which organization. So I'll try to include that all in 4.1 if it's okay with Counselor Getchea.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. 4.2, Counsel Dakota requests City Manager to work with the Transportation Engineer to install speed limit signs along Stevens Street corridor. Seconded by Counselor Getchea, Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion speaks for itself, but if you were driving on Middlesex and taking a left or right onto Stevens and going all the way up to Chemsley Street, there isn't one speed limit sign on either side of Stevens Street. And I got quite a few calls from constituents, especially the corridor between B Street, just going past St. Margaret's School and going to about, close to Janess Street where that's pretty, and they're moving pretty good, probably 45, 50 miles an hour. And I see the chief in the corner. Also, chief, if we could, Pine at Westford to Pine at Wedge, I got another call this weekend, I guess a pedestrian almost got hit. Car was going about 60 miles an hour, she said. So, and I do appreciate seeing the cruises out on the side streets of Stevens. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Dakota is a good motion. While we at this, you want to know where we at in installing the 20 mile per hour sign? You know, have we been doing that and how long would it take to finish that? Thank you.
Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good motion, similar to, I think, like as Counsel Noon mentioned, maybe this motion might request might change once the speed limit goes up. But what I've noticed, the people who tend to speed, they don't really pay attention to the speed limit. Squared out speed limit sign, I'm in favor of that too. But I'm trying to circle back to a motion that I had from before on having speed humps along Stevens Street. And if my memory serves me correctly, it had passed by the council. There's some area on Stevens Street that people are trying to speed more often than others. I don't know through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Manager, if you, has anything been planned in regards to speed humps along Stevens Street?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Council is the speed hump or the speed tables. We have been looking at that and that's usually best done when the roadway is being completed, strike that, when the roadway is being redeveloped, I guess, if you would. So just putting a speed hump there would create an issue if we were just to pop it there, but a speed table or something to that effect. If we're redoing Stevens Street, that's the time to actually put that into play. And it has everything to do with our snow and things of that nature. But I do know that we'll be looking at an informational to bring towards the council as to the updates on the 25 mile an hour signs and when that will actually be implemented. I could tell you a date in my head, but I want to make sure that I'm not incorrect on that. So we'll have that informational in the next two council meetings as to the order of operations, how that will happen with the speed, with the speed limit signs, where they are, when they'll be put up. I know we did hire, hire out that to be done, but just I'll let you know the timing. So hopefully the speed, the speed hump, hopefully I answered that question appropriately. It's when we start to reconstruct streets, that's the time to actually put those speed humps or speed tables in.
Sure. Great. Thank you. Maybe the combination of putting up speed limit signs and 20 mile per limit speed too that might help resolve some of the need for speed humps as well. I'm not sure. Thank you so much for the answer.
Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we on that, may I request that during the school started and then school dismissed, the 20 miles an hour during the school zone, because I have noticed this and some parent also mentioned that the car speeding on Stevens Street during the 20 hour, the school dismiss, so that that need to be enforced during the dismissal and then early in the morning when school started. So similar, the police department have enforced on Gorm Street around the school zone. So if that could be, you know, kind of looked at and kind of reduce potential accident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Getchea?
Mr. Mayor, the 20 mile an hour speed limit signs do work up there when school is in. So I mean, putting 25 isn't going to, so I do think the approach that Counselor Dakota took and the chief is taking is the only way that you're going to be able to enforce. As the manager stated, the only way to put in those speed bumps is to reclaim the road, which it was just done.
Counsel Dakota, when you say motion speaks for itself? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, I'm sorry, Counsel Robinson, did you have something to say? No, all right. Motion passes. 4.3, Counsel Robinson requests City Manager to prepare an informational session on limiting factors around vertical construction and increased housing stock. Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. This motion comes about through conversations with members of the community. And I always get the question, I mean, I think we're all aware, when we're looking at increased housing stock, we can't go out. We don't have the land to go out. Why can't we go up? And a lot of people don't really have that answer. And that's something that I get asked, whether it's a history thing, whether it's a space rights thing, whether it's just the cost of, you know, steel beams and I-beams and all that. But regardless, I think providing that information would at least allow people to fully understand. Because again, if we do move to, say, take down Smith Baker and it was something that was going to happen, again, that footprint cannot go out, but can it go up? And so I think it's important to get that information out there. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.4, Counsel Robinson requests City Manager to have proper department place stop signs, explore feasibility of illuminated crosswalks, and improve lending around Eagle Park. Seconded by Counsel Mercia, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. That's a location in Centerville, high, high pedestrian foot traffic. It's very dark in that area. It has been for quite some time. There are some current street lights. I'm not sure if they're updated LEDs. But again, I see at least two, three times a week, myself coming out of Hampshire to make a turn once it's dark out. And if there's a pedestrian walking, you can barely see them. It's not really well lit. In an illuminated crosswalk, you're at a bend as is. So I think cars coming from, say, Bridge Street heading towards Aiken or towards the Drakeet direction, if there was an illuminated crosswalk in front of Eagle Park, we have a convenience store right there and then a lot of people cross that crosswalk right there as well to get the 7-Eleven and the laundromats. So it is high pedestrian area. Thank you.
Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the make of the motion would be okay with it, maybe to add, to have the city explore other neighborhoods in the city, that some dark areas, this is very important, some neighborhoods have more lightings than other, just explore other dark areas in the neighborhoods that could add illuminated crosswalk signs like this as well. Thank you.
Perfectly fine with me.
Great. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes. 4.5, Counsel Janess requests City Manager to have proper department provide comprehensive MIS update around current state and future plans to the Technology and Utilities Subcommittee. Seconded. Seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Janess is joining us on Zoom. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, we're approaching about a year out from our technology incident last April. I think it's a good time to kind of take stock to where we are, where we're going, and just to have a good conversation about what's next. So I'd like to make a motion to refer this directly to the Technology and Utility Subcommittee.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we go into the, I see we're approaching the communication from the City Manager right after this. And I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules just to bring a point of personal privilege as to something that I've seen in the newspaper that I'd like to comment and ask a question on.
Second. Counsel Mercia, seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Mercia?
Thank you. There was an article in the paper where it talks about a national grid bucket truck that had their fuel tank punctured and it spilled 50 gallons of diesel fuel onto Patekett Boulevard and Old Ferry Road. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to the City Manager, can you tell us what happened? Where did that take, what happened with that truck?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, I did speak with Mr. Stedman from District 4 over at Mass Highway. And at that point in time, it was, they were still investigating it to make sure that there wasn't any problems. And as of Saturday, he was unsure if it was something at the bridge abutment that could have popped up and hit the saddle, or if it was something that fell off a truck, got jammed up and then hit the saddle gas tank. The saddle gas tank, I guess, better way to explain it is it's just on the side of where the steps are. So I'm waiting on Mr. Stedman. I apologize, he and I have not connected. But we, as everybody knows, we have Mass DOT out there fixing the bridge. But at that point, yes.
Yes, because I did receive a call from a person that was on that bridge at the time of this incident. And it seemed like one of the planks pieces on the bridge came up and punctured it, punctured that vehicle. And the man in the truck did not realize that till the oil started spewing all over the place. Now that troubles me tremendously because this wouldn't be the first time. Do we remember some time ago where a woman was coming over and one of those bankman planks shot up and did some damage to a portion of her car? Luckily, it was not a fuel tank. But that's a hazard, a dangerous, dangerous hazard. Is there not a way we can write a letter to the state and say, you have to speed it up? I'm not trying to alarm people, but I'm not going over that bridge again if that should happen to me. What if that exploded? Are we waiting for someone to die? And I'm not blaming you, Mr. Manager. I'm blaming the state. The state is very lax. The road was closed, people's travels were detained, stores lost businesses, Clean Harbor had to come and be called and clean it. This is not acceptable. Not acceptable when you're taking your life going over the Rook Bridge. How many dozens of state reps and people and neighbors and everyone came together and said, please help us? But yet it, I don't want to say it aggravates me, I'm just jealous, I guess, that Marty Mian can say, I want the University Avenue Bridge done and bang it is. Why does he get clout and we don't? We have to wait till someone dies? I don't want to do that. I'm just very angry. I know when you read the paper, it doesn't tell you, maybe because the investigation is still going on. But when you have people that call me that was on the bridge and saw what happened, this is bizarre. And I'm concerned. And why can't we use this to demand now? The squeaky wheel gets the grease. I'm not asking them now, the state, I'm demanding before someone gets killed, because those structures on the bridge, you go over there and it's going, boom, boom, boom. It's where there's a band underneath that bridge. I don't mean to make light of it. I just don't want to be the one that says, I told you so, someone died now. I don't want to hear that. Thank you.
Counsel Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I received multiple calls also on this, Mr. Manager. And I think over two years ago, this council, after we reviewed the last two inspections, and I don't have the stuff in front of me because I wasn't prepared to really speak about this, but the last two inspections we looked at, when you looked at even the temperature, they just took the temperature and copied and pasted to the second report that was there at the time. And you can see there were two totally different days on that report. So at the time, you weren't manager at the time, but at the time the council passed a motion to have a third party outside of the state inspect that building, the bridge, it was never done. Is that something that's still the will of this council is to have someone inspect it to make sure it is in good working conditions outside of the state? Because, to tell you the truth, I read the report and any engineer who's ever read that report would throw it in the garbage because there were pieces of it and not all, I don't know about all of it, that were cut and pasted from the previous report. So I think it may be something we should look at. And I would like to make a motion that we would have a third party inspect it if it's feasible.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselors, I did shoot a text back out to the director over at District Board to find out if there is an actual answer. So if I could at some point in time tonight, I don't have the privilege, but if I could ask you just to report back if I do have that information, if that's all right?
Yes.
And I can ask about the inspection reports. I would think that if it's a state bridge, we might have to ask to do an inspection on that bridge, but I'm not sure of that.
I believe that, and I looked this up, that you can do it outside. I don't know if it's feasible. So I guess I'll make a motion that we have a third party inspect it after seeing the cost and is it feasible by the city to do it?
Yes, second.
Could you report it?
Quick question, Mr. Manager. How long before we get to a reason why the tank was punctured?
Mr. Mayor, through you to the council, that could be tonight if I'm answered by, via text. I just shot off a quick text message.
So if it comes back that it was a piece that fell off a different truck that nicked it, we would know that?
I would hope that I'd be, I'll ask you, Mr. Mayor, for a point of privilege and give you the answer that I'm given.
Mr. Mayor, even though it comes back, it's just about a sanity piece for people to be at ease a little bit about that bridge.
I agree. I mean, that doing repairs currently, as we speak right now.
No, I agree. And I'm not saying that, I just would like people to be at ease if it isn't a high cost that we just look in to say, okay, we did our due diligence. We did this over two years ago. We asked for that report from the previous administration and we really never got any, and then the replacement came. I just, if we can just find out the cost of doing something like that.
Motion by Counsel Getchea, seconded by Counsel Mercia. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
5.1, motion response, job fair. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the report. It's very exciting to see, there's a date being picked for March 28th for job fair and that particularly for the, just the Lowell Police and Fire Department. With regard to both body, it's really a long process. You have to take civil service exam, pass it, good grade, and then the academy. But it's a good start. It really is a good start. And I would ask that the career centers with all the department, police and fire, really go into their social medias and reach out to as much as they can, marketing to the young adult center. I know that the career center have a bi-weekly newsletter, use that as well to try and to get, you know, more people to go. And also, and the report also indicated that a career day, which hasn't happened before, something great. I like the idea very much where you would have various department doing a career day and JFK or whatnot and talk about what each department do and what type of skill they needed, right? And those are something that, and that, so that people who, young adult who want to apply because of the benefit, the pension that the city offer, who wouldn't want it, right? So really, you have to do that. And while you do that, I would suggest that you reach out as wide as possible to get more people, especially young adult, to come to this event. So thank you for the report and thank you for the idea of doing those two to start off with. Appreciate it.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleague for putting this motion forward and great response. We talked about this before, though. I think this is one approach, is to try to draw people to come to us, provide information, meet with them, explain what we're looking for. But I also remember one time we tried the pilot of going out to the community in tabling. And I believe it was at Middlesex, we held a job fair. And there was talks about getting a van or some kind of thing through the career center, I believe, to actually do more out in the community with tabling, maybe set up a tent at events between the university, Middlesex Community College, and different events that go on throughout the city, spring and summertime especially, and fall as well. I think it's a great opportunity to get out there, set up a table and just start advocating that, hey, we're looking for entry level all the way up to this. And it's getting out where the community is and to try to pull the community in for employment opportunities. Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to that, we have various events in the City of Lowell. So if the job fair can be, can have a table at these events so people can learn more about and apply for, that will be also in addition to the outreach effort by the Mass High. Thank you.
Motion response B, laying of wreaths, American flags, hometown banners. Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. I am looking forward to a more detailed discussion at the Veterans Subcommittee meeting that we will have on March 12th at 5:30 here in the chamber. So I invite all the public to attend. And also, I would encourage families and friends who has loved one, who want to have a banner to honor them for their sacrifice, to reach out to the City Veterans Affairs Office. And please join us on March 12th so we can have more discussion on the banners in addition to the May celebration of Memorial Day celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion response C, Lowell High School student on the School Building Committee. Counsel Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just want to thank the Manager Golden and Assistant City Manager Machado for getting this done. If you please could just send a letter over to the head of schools, Mr. Fiatto, and thank him for the choice that he's about to make. And just send a thank you to the student for getting involved in helping understand this project. Thank you.
Counsel Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Constrition mentioned it to me that instead of one, could it be possible that the city and the school appointed two, a male and a female? The female and the male may have different perspective. And if you remember, the bathroom issues, the men bathroom in a new high school had no problem, but the female bathroom is a problem. So if the committee, it's a city, can appoint two, a student, a male and a female, that will be helpful because both of them have different perspective on things that need to be done at the new, new high school. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counsel, that's fine. If it's the will of the council, I think having two, two young man and young lady, we can ask that and I'm sure Mr. Fiatto would be fine with that. Great. I'll just have Mr. Machado. I'll just have Mr. Machado reach out to Mr. Fiatto tomorrow. Thank you.
Excellent. 5.2, informational report, Lowell Forward. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Councilors, it's a very exciting time today with presenting of our master plan. Assistant City Manager Rose has been doing one heck of a job, and I want to really say thank you very much to DPD, many of which are here tonight, because this particular piece is a real group effort. The men and women who are seated behind you have been working tirelessly to make this happen. They're here, and I just want to say thank you, because this wouldn't be possible with all their hard, without all of their hard work and dedication and being out in the neighborhoods and speaking to people. So if we could give them a round of applause for all the hard work you're about to see. I'd also like to thank UTIL, who is the lead consultant on this. They've done a great job, and really, truthfully, when you're talking about trying to capture the thoughts that are throughout this entire city, it's a challenge. We've had a number of people, a number of the council is here, that attended all these and had the opportunity to give our, give their feedback. And then we, of course, had many, many people that showed up to give their feedback. So it's going to be a very exciting time. The various departments are going to be talking about tonight with the Assistant City Manager. All of those department heads will be before you, and what our plan is every six months, because we want this to be a living, breathing document, something that's not just put onto the shelf and aspired after, but things that would actually change, change in time. If there's something that we aspire to, when we reach, we fail, we want to make sure that it can still happen. And with the professionals at the DPD, I have no doubt that that will happen. But at this time, it's my privilege to introduce the Assistant City Manager Rose to go through her presentation. Madam Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here tonight to talk about the Lowell Forward Master Plan. This is something that the Department of Planning started thinking about over two years ago, and it's taken 18 months of really hard work to get to the point where we are today. And so I'm very pleased to be able to share details with you about what our community's vision is for the next 10 to 20 years. So although there are many planners in DPD that love creating plans, we don't go through this whole process just to create a plan. The state lays out what it expects communities, from communities for their comprehensive master plan, and so Lowell is not the only community that has a master plan, but the Lowell Forward Master Plan is unique to our city, and it's what Lowell wants to look like as the community continues to grow. This plan includes a vision for our community. It has goals, objectives, actions, and strategies to achieve those things, and it strikes a balance between pragmatic and realistic action items and larger goals that will push our community forward and make Lowell a better place for all of us. So tonight, I'll be presenting an overview of the plan itself, but this does not mark the end of the process. Tomorrow, the draft of the plan is going to be available online, including executive summary translations in Camai, Portuguese, and Spanish. You'll be able to find the link on the city's website, and we'll share information on our social media accounts. Hard copies of the plan itself will also be available here in City Hall in Room 51 in the Development Services Office. So this is essentially going to open our public comment period, where we're going to ask people to take the time to review the plan, send us feedback, and after two weeks, we'll close the public comment period, we'll collect that feedback that we received, make any edits we need to make to the plan, and then bring it forward to the planning board for their vote and approval. Assuming the planning board is going to vote positively for the plan, it will come back in front of this council again for a formal vote of approval and adoption, and that's when the real work begins. So Lowell Forward is our new master plan, but it is not the only plan that this community has. So this planning process actually started with our consultants gathering existing plans that we have done and plans that have been completed by our community partners, and have them do a thorough review of those plans, what has been achieved, what is left to achieve, what we may want to leave behind, and what is still relevant and important in those plans to the community. Consultants also try to get an in-depth understanding of Lowell. If we want to build off of where we are and move forward, we need a fundamental understanding about what our community looks like today. And so our consultants looked at things like census data to understand things like how many people in our community are cosburdened with their housing. They worked with city staff to understand development trends in the community, like how many residential permits have been pulled, what type of housing is being built, and where that housing is being built. In addition, they look at who's living in Lowell today. How old is our community? What is the ethnic breakdown of our community? How many people in Lowell are renters versus homeowners, for example? And all of this baseline information helps us establish a solid picture of Lowell today, and we bring that baseline information with us as we reach out to the community and ask them how they see Lowell and what they want to see in our community moving forward. I cannot stress enough how much the staff in DPD advocated for a thorough community outreach process to inform this plan. The last master plan was done 100% in-house, and it was a very good plan, and it included a lot of community voices. But I think as we looked at our own staff capacity and recognized that if we wanted to increase the community input, we would need added capacity. And so DPD staff successfully secured grant funding from the state to add to funding we had available from the city to help cover the costs of bringing in a consultant team for this plan. By having consultants on board, we were able to do much more community outreach than ever to inform this plan. And in addition to having information online, putting out surveys, having public meetings, we were able to fund the hiring of a local community organizer and brought together a master plan steering committee. Our community organizers here in the rear, thanks Mercy. So during our community outreach, we didn't just host meetings and ask people to show up. Our community organizer, Mercy, went to numerous community events, hosted focus groups, had community conversations with important stakeholder groups, and that means that this particular plan has input from people across the community, diverse cultural groups, youth, seniors, religious institutions, institutional partners, volunteer, and nonprofit organizations. DPD staff and our consultants included kid-friendly tables and activities at our public meetings. We went to people where they were at community events, where we tabled and asked people for their feedback. We provided translated surveys and live translations at our public meetings. The team we have here in DPD today is one that cares deeply about community outreach and equity, and it is due to their commitment that I believe this is one of the most inclusive plans this department has ever created. Early on during our internal staff discussions, and very quickly when we started our community conversations, it became clear there were topics that consistently rose to the top. Those common themes have become the foundation of this Lowell Forward Plan. Sustainability and resilience. Lowell must plan now for how we will grow in the future, and that means we have to proactively plan for things like dealing with climate change and mitigating the impact of severe weather. Proactive maintenance. I know that this is a topic that is very important to this particular council. It's really great to have nice things like new parks and walkways, but how are we ensuring that we're maintaining them? And how do we manage our staffing to best address our varied maintenance needs? Accountable government and community stewardship. This is a very thorough plan, one that will include, that includes a number of action items for departments across the city, but it also includes a variety of roles for our community partners. A successful master plan will never be achieved by a planning department alone. Everyone has a role in making it possible. Innovation and creativity. As the city prepares to celebrate its bicentennial, it's good to remember that Lowell wouldn't be Lowell if it hadn't been for a handful of businessmen who went to Europe, took their ideas, brought them back here, and created those textile mills. And many years later, followed by a congressman who had the crazy idea of encouraging the federal government to create a national park here to celebrate that textile history. And now we're home to a university with cutting-edge technology and one of the largest artist communities in the Northeast at Western Ave Studios. The legacy of people pushing boundaries has cemented itself as a core principle in this community. Today, Lowell is full of creative artists and entrepreneurs, and sustaining the energy that they bring to our community is important, as is finding ways to keep them and their ideas here in the city. Communities always have to prepare for change. It's inevitable. Lowell today is not what it was 20 years ago, and it's our job to ensure that as our community changes, that it changes for the better, that we have set ourselves up to grow and change in ways that work for our community, that years from now, people will look back at this time, and they'll believe we made the right decisions to help Lowell. I want to be clear that planning for growth, though, isn't just about thinking where we can stick a new building in a vacant lot. It's about much more than that. It's about how that growth can impact our community's fiscal sustainability. How can we balance the need for growth, the need for more housing, and the need to provide more services to our residents? All of these things are interconnected, and planning for growth will ensure that we don't find ourselves reacting to it in the future. Some specific ways Lowell can plan for its future growth is to focus on growing and activating our downtown. We have taken some positive steps in this direction recently with things like the DMU parking changes, our successful pop-up retail program on Market Street, and the commercial vacancy registration program that this council voted for recently, but there's more work to do. We can build on our unique strengths. Not every community has a Cambodia town, or a four-year university and a community college, or a professional women's hockey team and arena football, or miles of canals and two rivers. So these are things that make Lowell special, and we need to tap into those unique characteristics, celebrate them, continue to build off of them, and improve them. Lowell still does have areas where there are significant opportunities for growth, areas where building and land are underutilized, areas where we would benefit from greater density and a greater concentration of associated businesses. So with our vision and principles in place, and our recognition that planning for growth is critical, this plan breaks down a number of specific areas of focus. These topics all came directly from our conversations with members of the community, and I'm sure that the members of this council will not be surprised to see many of the issues on this list. I know DPD staff was happy to see this list as it came together, because it includes many of the things that we're already working on, and it's nice to know that much of our existing work is consistent with the desires of our community. So what you're seeing on this screen is just a snapshot of some of the items that each of the chapters includes. Each of these topics presented on the last slide was essentially get their own section of the plan, which will include more detailed specifics. I've pulled examples to give you all a sense of the types of goals and action items you'll find in the plan and how it's being presented. So you'll notice that each of the main topics is color-coded, so you'll start to associate certain colors with certain topics, and it'll be easy when reviewing the plan to visualize when you've changed topics within the plan. Here, you'll see a goal of the land use section. Each goal is presented in a similar way, an explanation of what it is, why it's important, whether this is something the city is just getting started on, or if it's something we've been working on, a goal for when this work is going to get underway, and who is charged with leading the work. And as I said previously, DPD isn't going to be the only team working on this. It's a citywide master plan, and it'll take participation from many to accomplish. So in this particular land use category, we have a goal to do a full comprehensive review of our zoning. The last comprehensive review of the city's zoning happened over 20 years ago, and so this is a great example of something that DPD will be taking on after this master planning process is complete. Without this process, I'm not sure this would have been so high on our to-do list at this point. So for this particular goal, one of the first concrete steps DPD staff will take will be to review projects that have come in front of the land use boards and assess the variances being requested and granted. Understanding these two data points will show us where existing zoning is conflicting with potential development in the city, and it's a great starting off point for us in this work. So next in housing, here's another example of something that the council has discussed many times that also came up during our community planning process. As discussions about ways to create more affordable housing have come up, so has the issue of creating an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and this is something that DPD and the city manager's office are already having conversations about. And the next step in this work is to gather best practices from communities across the Commonwealth that already have existing trust funds, and with that in mind, we have already reached out to several communities to start those initial conversations. Under the mobility category, I picked these goals and action items to give you an example of some of the items where the city and community partners will need to work together. Yes, the city, of course, can impact and improve mobility by doing road and sidewalk projects, but we will never run a bus system, and so we will have to work with our community partners in the LRTA to improve mobility within the city. These economic development goals and action items are all things that we're actually already doing, but in order to see progress, we need to expand this work. I think this is a great example that not everything that's in this master plan has to be a brand-new idea. Sometimes the things we're doing are the right things, and we just need to stay the course and continue to make an impact. We need to keep pushing ourselves to be consistent with our efforts. Our successful pop-up retail location on Market Street will continue to have small vendors rotating throughout the year, and our economic development staff will work to connect the small retailers to additional technical assistance and hopefully help them graduate into other locations within the city. It's about building off the things that we are doing and showing those positive impacts. Looking at energy, climate, and the environment section, the state of Massachusetts set a goal to reach carbon neutrality by 2050 back in 2001. So this isn't a new idea, but the goal is still relevant and still important to the community. The city created the sustainability last fiscal year as an initial step in our continuing commitment to sustainability, but there's more to do. And so pulling ongoing, long-term projects into this plan ensures that they remain a community priority and that we have ways to continuously track their progress over time. One of the exciting steps being taken in this area is related to solar arrays on our municipal buildings, and we're going to be hearing more from our sustainability team regarding this work in the very near future. Looking at parks, open spaces, and trails, I think this, these particular goals give us a great idea that shows, that show us that a lot of parties are involved in achieving the desired goals. So yes, of course, we have a parks department, and yes, of course, that parks department is charged with the maintenance of parks, but DPD plays a role in how we design those parks, and engineering plays a role, because it's their roadway and sidewalk projects that make it possible for people to get to our parks. And so this plan doesn't just take the topics and put them with the obvious choice, it takes the time to really think about the ways that we all have a stake in these goals and action items, and gives us each that responsibility. A fantastic project we completed this year that really set a new bar for equitable investment in our open spaces is, in partnership with the city's Disability Commission, this year the city installed AAC boards at all of our playgrounds. We're also working hard to replace all the mulch at our playgrounds with poured rubber surfacing to increase accessibility, and significantly more of that park work is coming in this year. I picked this particular goal in the arts and culture section to show that some of the major topics in this plan bleed into one another. Arts and culture is, of course, important to Lowell, and while the experience of visitors is important, the absolute truth is that Lowell having a successful arts and cultural scene is good for the city's economic development, and it's interconnected. And because of that, DPD's economic development team is going to work on this just as much as CASE and the city's artist community. So we've already rolled out changes to many of our longstanding events. We just had a very successful winter fest that came back to the heart of downtown, and these efforts to reimagine our arts and cultural events will continue in the coming year. So I know that was a lot, but this is a big plan, and I want to talk about sort of, now that we have this plan, what's next. This plan isn't just goals and action items and fancy photos. Lowell Forward focuses a lot on implementation. The team worked hard to ensure that the work identified in this plan is both achievable but a bit of a stretch. It's not much of a goal if it's easy to achieve. And so in order to ensure that we can take this plan and show the community what we've accomplished, we've included a number of quantitative metrics that we can track over time. So this is a snapshot of the economic, of one of this economic development sections to give you a feel of what the matrix in the plan is going to look like. Each goal has a matrix, and it's also color-coded. Each sheet will have an additional column at the end where whoever's the responsible party for that particular action item will be able to track its progress. In this example, it won't be DPD saying, we've reduced vacancy in Lowell. That's too generic. We're going to drill down and be able to provide information like, we've decreased vacancy by this percentage, or we've provided this much funding for this many small businesses in the community, and we're going to try to do that with each of the of the action items to be as specific as possible. DPD will work closely with the manager's office on the management of this matrix, but it won't just live in the spreadsheet. So as the city manager previously stated, this is a living document, and that means that you'll be hearing about it quite a lot. The plan after today is that on a rotating basis, this council is going to hear from department heads roughly every six months, where we're going to bring forward updates on major projects. We'll highlight areas within the master plan that these projects are helping us address, and we'll discuss with this council and the public the progress we're making and any roadblocks we may have hit. So for example, I'm here tonight, and I'll be back again sometime in August probably with an update on our comprehensive zoning review. So not only will these informationalists keep the council and the community more up-to-date on major projects being taken on by departments, but it'll be a regular opportunity to track the progress of the plan. If Lowell Forward is the vision for Lowell's future, then we need to start taking action today to make that future possible. I'm really hopeful that we have set ourselves up here to achieve great things. And although the manager started us off by thanking the team, I need to take another opportunity to really thank the staff in DPD for making this plan possible. It was their hard work and vision that led us here today. And I want to take a moment in particular to thank project manager Francesca Sigliano. This was Fran's first major project that she managed from start to finish, and I've been so impressed with her hard work. I also want to thank the many departments across the city that helped review sections of the plan that were relevant to them. And of course, this plan would not exist if not for our neighbors and friends taking time out of their lives to participate and have their voices heard. I'm so grateful for everyone who responded to a survey, came to a public meeting, voted with a sticker on a poster board at a public event. All of your feedback was valuable, and we can't thank you enough for being generous with your time. And to members of the steering committee, thank you. We have not relied on a steering committee like this in quite some time, and honestly, I was a little nervous when we were starting to pull it together, because I wasn't sure how it was going to work. But it's been such an important part of the creation of this plan. And I want to thank each of the members of the committee for their time, and a special thank you to the two representatives from the city council who were on the steering committee, Councilors Mercier and Councilor Janess. And a final thank you to the city manager for his support in this process. A master plan that does not have the full support of an administration will never achieve its goals. Knowing that the manager is supportive of this plan and has already laid the groundwork for the entire leadership team regarding how this plan will continue to guide us moving forward means that we have a lot of very exciting work ahead of us.
Thank you, members of the city manager. Well done. Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'm excited to see this, and hopefully we can implement it. And I'm also excited that I was able to be part of the putting stickers on where I like to see the house being built and stuff like that. Yes, you can see the picture. One of the thing that I just wish that we have this presentation as a counselor ahead of the meeting tonight, so we can kind of review, because they, it's so small, the text on the screen is small, so I can't see it too well. During the neighborhood meetings outreach, I always ask the planners to look at the smart city concept when we do this Lowell Forward, because the smart city concept, similar to what we discussed, but how do we combine them together is really critical. So this is a time, if we can look at, you know, as part of the future and comments and stuff like that, how we can coordinate and combine all these components that we talked, that the Assistant City Manager mentioned tonight, because it's all going to be interconnected to make everything work. So I encourage the planner to come back together, to maybe incorporate some of the smart city component in it. It's already in it, but how does all these components work together to achieve this Lowell Forward? Again, thank you for the hard work of the planners and all, everyone else, and the community out there that participate. I know the pizza is good at the planning night, so that's one of the attractions. So thank you so much again.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say first, what a presentation. I thought that was great. I liked the way, as they said, the city has moved forward in the past from people that push boundaries. And I think that's exactly what this team that they brought together is looking to do for the next five, 10 years down the line for our city. And thank you to all those that had a hand on making this come to fruition. It's a lot of work. As you can see, I can only imagine the amount of hours that have gone in so far. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of these projects when they start breaking ground. Thank you again.
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I like all the priority, particularly two of them. Back in the last council, I introduced the idea of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. You know, I'm very happy to see that that's part of the recommendation. That's the revenue that we get. You know, we don't, we don't use tax money. We have to learn how to use outside revenue, other revenue. This is one of, the revenue should be passed this as a council. The other that I like most as well is downtown revitalization. You know, similar to the, many years ago, council previous tried to do Business Improvement District. We need to bring that back too at some point. And I know that some discussion has been had. So those are the idea going forward. You know, I think it's very exciting for the city. The title of itself is Lowell Forward, you know, as a master plan, which is a very good thing. And I hope that we, after we done this, finish this, after you come back from the planning board, maybe a couple months later down the road, that we don't shell this plan. You know, we implement this plan going forward. So thank you. Great presentation by Giovanni Roseby and her team. Thank you.
Councilor Scott, then Councilor Mercier, then Councilor Getche. Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually was going to say something similar to Councilor Noon is about not shelving the plan. And one of the criticisms we always hear is that there isn't the follow-through. There isn't, you know, enough follow-through in all of it. And I really want to commend Assistant City Manager Giovanni Rose for making sure that there's quantitative data points in here, that there's plans to have updates by the department heads. These are really important inclusions in this plan that really get me excited for it. And I just commend you on your work. Thank you.
Councilor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a very thorough overview of everything that's going on in the city. Thank, congratulations, Giovanni, and to Francesca. This is a very thorough, well-put-together, strenuous report, and I'm very pleased. I just want to say one thing and segue it in, not to say we ever, ever discussed this on, in any of the committee meetings that we had, but I'm hearing a rumor, and so much for rumors, but I thought I'd mention it rather than let it go, that there's, and I hope I would, I wouldn't have seen it under zoning review. I did not. But I will be watching this city to eliminate the single-family housing. I would hope that that would never happen, but there's a rumor to that effect, that they would eliminate the single-family housing as to allow no single homes, but have added as building ADU additions in general, not in-law apartments, not anything like that, but to add on to single-family homes, because there's no listing for that. I would hope that this would not be true. The reason I say that, because I hear at the same rumor that the, that the governor, Mara Healy, is supporting that along with another state rep. So I would hope, and I will watch this very, very carefully, because I think we need single-family homes. We should not eliminate them. And I'm not saying we ever discussed this. We didn't. I'm just giving you some overview as to be on the lookout if this happens, because I will be the loudest person speaking against this. But other than that, and I didn't want to dampen anybody's night, but this was a very thorough, and I'm very proud of everybody that worked very, very hard for many, many months to put this together. And I like the part especially, we can build all new things and new parks, and we have to maintain it. Maintaining is very, very important. So thank you for letting me say that.
Councilor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I, like every other speaker, enjoyed looking at the plans. I think there, you put an all-star cast together, but it gets harder and harder to do that every time we get into this. Through you, Mr. Mayor, through Assistant City Manager Baez, what do you see as the biggest challenge in this proposal, these plans?
There are a lot of things in the plan that I think will be challenging. I think one of the things that will be new and unique in this plan that's going to take some work to get used to is that, like, constant updating of the plan to make sure that we are actually tracking the individual action items on a regular basis, so that it's not like a year later being like, "Oh, yeah, what happened to that thing?" And that's not something that we've really done across the board as far as leadership team. And so I think that as far as implementing the plan, that's one of the things that I feel like, you know, it might be a little bumpy at first as we roll that out. And I could see the consistency of ensuring that we maintain that regular progress update and feedback is going to be a challenge at first. And then I think, you know, there are issues related to housing and homelessness in this plan that, you know, I think are challenging for the community forever, and we'll have to continue to try to work on those things. So I think it's a combination of logistics will be a little tricky at first, but I think that the managers created a game plan that's going to help that. And then as far as achieving some of the larger goals of the plan to try to, you know, create more housing and help our homeless community, some of those things are clearly going to continue to be challenges.
I love the plans, but when you look at a lot of it as a wish list, as you outline, you say, "Okay, how do we get to these goals?" And I think that that's going to be our biggest challenge. You know, when I look at the city, we can't do the simple things right. Like, you look at the stock closed bathrooms, they're still not done. You got them in half repair, and it's just a complete mess when we are told they're going to get done. So when you look at the larger, big picture, I just wonder how we're actually going to get to this stage, because we had a master plan, and, you know, as different administrations, there's just different plans that go on and they change over. How do we create a plan that will last from one administration to the next, or if this administration lasts longer, if you left, if someone else comes in? That's the challenge in government, because your goals may be your goals, and then someone comes in and says, "I don't care what Assistant City Manager Baez wanted. I want this." So that's really grabbing that and making that foundation so it's solid is always the challenge. And I do thank everybody for putting this together, and I think the work and document is always the challenge in the city of Lowell.
Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate you, the Assistant City Manager, on putting the work together and the presentation, great presentation. And it's great that you have the smartest team behind us here, working on this project together. Very, very impressive. But what I want to say also impressive are the members of the steering committee. If you look at each one of them, although the names, they are the who's who of people that have been very committed and dedicated, different areas of the city. So that's really a great team, great members of people that are really committed to making sure that the city moves forward. And that's a lot of work to work with that many members, communities. So congratulations. I thank you for pulling together that type of dynamic team together.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, well done. Nice job on the, on the presentation. I'm just looking at timeframes. What are we looking at for project times here when we're, I mean, I haven't read the 580 pages that you got together, but can you give me kind of a timeframe of what we're looking at for certain projects?
So first, the plan will get adopted. So we think that'll happen like next month. And then some of the goals in the plan, like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund conversation, have already started. And so some of that stuff's ongoing. Master plans in general are like a 10, a 10-year vision. And so we have some things that we've already started, some things that are on the very near horizon, and then some things that we probably won't even get to for another, you know, five to seven years. And so it sort of depends on what it is and how much sort of the community talked about those things. Each of the goals in the plan does have a goal set in, within it to say, like, this is a short-term thing. This is something that came up that people really want you to start working on right now.
Is the need in the short timeframe, or is it, you know, this could take eight years, or that type of thing? Where we know we need certain things, you know, are they going to be done in a quicker, quicker fashion?
Yeah. So a lot of the things that were identified as like top priorities are sort of categorized as like short-term. So those are things that either are underway already or are going to be starting like within the year, for example. And then there are some things that were sort of would be nice to have, but we should really focus on the stuff that we really need to get done first. And so those things were, were pushed out to the later years as, you know, important and things that people in the community said that we should do, but not at the sort of risk of not moving forward on something that we know we need right now.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all the hard work. With that being said, the motion to accept placed on file by Councilor Leahy, seconded by Councilor Getche, all in favor, passes. Section 6, vote for the city manager. Motion by Councilor Yem takes 6-1 and 6-2 together.
Yes.
Seconded by Councilor Scott. 6-1, vote to accept $2,000 gift from Lowell Five Bank. And 6.2, vote to accept and expend $12,512.09 FY24 FY safety grant. Any comments? The motion to accept by Councilor Mercier, seconded by Councilor Yem. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Yem?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Dakota?
Yes.
Councilor Getche?
Yes.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes. Before we take 6-3, there's a motion to hear 8.1. First, it was the Finance Subcommittee from February 21st by Councilor Scott, seconded by Councilor Mercier, all in favor, say aye. Councilor Scott.
Okay, I guess I'm on. So the Finance Subcommittee met on Wednesday, February 21st. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM, and present on the roll call were Councilor Dakota, Councilor Janess, and myself. Also present at the meeting were Connor Baldwin, CFO, Austin Ball, Assistant CFO, Giovanni Baez-Rose, Assistant City Manager, City Manager Tom Golden, Kelly Oak, City Auditor, and Superintendent Houdon from the Lowell Police Department. The councilors present included Councilor Yem and Mayor Rourke. And members of the Lowell community were present, Mr. Adam Baiki from the Community Preservation Committee, and Matt LaLasher. The first order of business was for the Subcommittee to review the 2024 round of community preservation projects, which were referred to the Subcommittee by the full council. The projects were approved by the Community Preservation Council at the conclusion of their process this past fall, and ultimately approved this past January by the committee. The CPC recommended $811,089.11 in total funding from the Community Preservation Fund to the following projects: Suffolk Place, Mass Mills, Project Vlahos, and 150 Middlesex Street. After the presentation, I made a motion that was seconded by Councilor Dakota for approval of the funding request to the full council, and to request the city manager have the law department prepare the proper vote for the funding from the Community Preservation The second order of business was to consider a vote to appropriate $15.4 million in FY24 free cash from the administration. It was referred to the Subcommittee by the full council on February 6th. The city CFO, Connor Baldwin, made a detailed presentation to the committee regarding the administration's recommendation for appropriation, and how the free cash certification and the amounts requested were in, I'm sorry, in keeping in line with the Division of Local Services and State Department of Revenue best practices. The CFO, city manager, Lowell Police Superintendent, and city auditor answered numerous questions regarding the various components of the plan, which included capital improvements, new equipment, line striping, pavement presentation, preservation for $2 million. pavement preservation for $2 million, fund to replenish the FY24 borrowed from stabilization for $3.27 million, legal settlements, judgments, workers' comp costs for $4 million, and funding for collective bargaining negotiations for $3 million, and lastly, funding to meet the OPEB funding policy for $775,000. A motion was made by Council Dakota and seconded by Council Janess to recommend approval of the funding request to the full City Council. The final item on the agenda was regarding the capital project to make capital improvements to Colley Stadium. Mr. Matt LaLasher presented the private funding group, I'm sorry, representing the private funding group, which is working with the city to raise private dollars to contribute to the overall financing plan, provided comments on the phases of the project. Early work would include a new synthetic turf at Carvallo Field, expanding the track by adding two additional lanes, and building a new weight room and office space. The project is very beneficial to both the community and the students, and the Finance Subcommittee plans to hear updates as construction progresses. An updated facility will be able to house more events. The Subcommittee made a motion by Council Dakota, seconded by Council Janess, to make the weight room a permanent structure and not use modular. So, I would make a motion to submit this as a report of progress, including the adoption of all the motions made by the Subcommittee.
Motion by Council Scott, seconded by Council Dakota, all in favor, say aye, passes. Heading back to the--
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick question through you to Mr. Baldwin. Actually, when I went back to work the next day, somebody in the Business Department said that buildings, Esser money cannot be used on buildings, but they could be used on modulators. So, I was kind of taken aback by that. So, I don't know if anybody had the right answer for that because I'm not for the modular portion of this. I'd rather have the building, obviously. So, I don't know if you have the answer, or if somebody was giving me false information, but I thought I'd bring it up.
CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I can address part of the question, Counselor. As far as I understand, in the School Department, they, and I know that I've been a part of some conversations directly with DESI, each one of these projects has to go to a representative at DESI for approval, anything that's capital in nature. They have these capex forms that must be submitted to DESI for approval. So, the projects do not move forward until granted approval by DESI. And my understanding is on the Colley, which doesn't, in the very early stages of that project, it was simply a modular weight room, but has expanded into a multifaceted project to include the expansion of the track, the turf field at Carvallo Field, as well as this much larger permanent structure for the weight room and the offices. The component of it to be used from Esser has been approved, and I've seen some of those communications with DESI. However, in a separate project that is for modulators at the STEM School, that is also something that I believe has been approved by DESI for use. And that is a project that is just about to get going, separate and apart from the things we've been talking about at a different school. But as to whether these are sort of rule-of-thum issues with Esser, I can't say specifically. My understanding is that it's case by case based on the regulations, much like--
It was just a concern of mine because I knew it was 1.1 million, right? Out of that, that's a fund. All right. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, we return to six-point-three. Vote FY24 free cash certification and recommendation. We'll read the full reading and the second reading. Vote ordered by the City Council of Lowell by two-thirds. Voters follows the amount of $15,467,055 to be appropriated. The motion to adopt by Council Nun, seconded by Council Yem. Comments? Council Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I didn't have a chance to get to the Finance Committee meeting, but I just don't understand why some of these things should have been financed in the current budget. And I don't understand why they weren't when we were looking at it. And like workman's comp 1.9, why do we need 1.9 million dollars extra in workman's comp? Do we still do workman's comp in-house?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Gladly let the CFO talk about this as well. But workman's comp is a cleanup piece, and we have just started to go outside with our workers' comp piece as far as getting that set up. This is something that, as we look back through some of the past over in the Legal Department, not having a full legal staff, we're using this opportunity to clean all of the past claims up.
So, then if we had claims from last year, how did we not pay them in the last year's budget? Are they rollovers, or are they from this year?
Who wants it? CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with the workers' compensation line item in the free cash vote, as the manager alluded to, this is both for current-year claims, it's for prior medical expenses for employees that are on 111F, or for School Department employees that are out on injury under the, I don't know the statutory reference, but the other claims. That we had the workers' compensation agent retired during the course of the last fiscal year. And so, with the changeover in the Law Department, they were reviewing all of these outstanding claims from doctors and from physical therapists, et cetera, from vendors. And so, it did take some time for them to validate all of these invoices. And so, that explains in portion, part of the backlog for expenses that are going to be paid with the free cash appropriation. This is not a normal amount, but it will clear out the backlog. The other component is to fund a contract in the Law Department. So, the plan is to change the nature in which the city administers the workers' compensation program by bringing in an outside company to assist with the administration. This will fund a component of that contract with the outside agency.
So, what's the cost of the outside agency?
They submitted a proposal, but I'd have to get you a report. I don't know off the top of my head.
Before I can vote on this, I would love to see those costs because if it isn't cost prohibitive for the city, and we can hire an employee who's done this for, we had one who was here 30 years and didn't need to go outside and hire more and more outside people, why would we just go out and hire outside people? So, I would love to see those costs before I went out. And some of the other things, like when you look at police vehicles, we should have had those in the current budget. They're one-time purchases, and they shouldn't be coming out of this. If there's funding left over, it should go back to the taxpayer. It's an overtax. And those numbers should have went back to the taxpayer. And we've talked about this over and over again. This $15 million, we went up five and a half, three and a half assessments. One-time funds should not be used. They should be given back. We should have had those things in the budget. The police cars and some of the other things, when you start looking through this, and that's just my opinion. I won't support it tonight. I just think that, you know, some of these things, workman's comp, you need more information than just giving away 1.9 million dollars. I just think we budgeted for workman's comp every single year, and now, all of a sudden, we're 1.9 million dollars in the hole, and we're going outside contractor because somebody retired again. It just does not make any sense to me, and I won't support any of this until we see the real paperwork behind it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getche?
No.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes. Seven, ordinance from the City Manager, seven-point-one, amend salary grid. The first reading, the motion to refer to a public hearing on March 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Mercia, all in favor, say aye.
Could I recuse myself from this?
Council Getche accuses himself. Council Mercia.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the City Manager, is everybody, does this apply to every department? Well, just tell me which departments it doesn't cover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to address the question. So, this is an ordinance that will be referred to a public hearing. And the ordinance tier is what governs all non-union employees in the city. So, any employee of the city who's not in a union, who's either management, or grants, or other various employees, confidential employees, are governed by this salary table. And so, it's not every employee in the city. It does reach into most departments, but anybody who would be governed by a collective bargaining agreement, this would not apply to them.
So, because I don't know whether, when the time comes, do I have to, can I vote or not? I don't want to violate any rules.
So, if I have family members who work in the department, would it be okay for me to vote?
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, for the individual council, is I think it might be an opportunity to speak to the council, our council on this. But once again, I don't want to give legal advice here, but I think everything would be fine. But I think right after this happens, maybe we could speak to Mr. Williams if anybody has an individual discussion. Currently, right now, this is just going--
Just before a public hearing--
Sure.
Before the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
That way, we don't have to get into anyone's private--
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Robinson, through you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. It's, if you look at this, it states how we're looking at potentially going to nine steps within the grid for the ordinance employees. But you only gave us documentation that shows seven, seven steps for each of the grades within that grid. So, but it's referencing it's going to be a nine grade.
So, there are seven steps within each tier, and there will be a ninth tier. So, each tier has seven steps within it. And then, this is part of our salary classification system. Right now, it goes from one to eight. And essentially, what we're doing is adding one more tier that we'll call DHO zero. But within each one of those tiers, there are seven steps, and that's the way that we classify employees who are non-union.
So, this additional tier would be zero on the grid? So, it would be like the entry level, or it would be the higher end? The higher end?
It would be at the top of the tier, Counselor.
Okay. And so, it's non-existent, this tier currently?
This would add a new tier.
And what is the reason? So, is this coming off of like a classification study, or is this just something that we kind of pulled out of the net?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this proposal is sort of the last component of what has been a multi-year classification study and strategy of the administration. So, throughout, over the last better part of two years, the administration has been working with our partners in labor and the collective bargaining units to adjust salaries within those labor units. This represents the end to adjust those non-union employees who are currently classified under the tier, I'm sorry, under the salary grid. And so, oftentimes, what we see is people in assistant department head or department head positions who are leaving the city for positions in other communities or in the private sector. And those employees are sort of, some of those employees, I should say, are stuck at the top of the tier. And so, what we would be able to do by adding one more tier to the top of that is to reclassify and some of the employees who are department heads now within those tiers to attract employees and retain employees at the management level.
So, and again, that's a little bit confusing to me because now, if we have, let's say, so we're calling the classification, the DH00 would be the grouping. That's the highest paid tier in this, of all the groupings. Now, and if you had a department head, say that was a DH01 and was at step seven, maxed out, and you're trying to increase their pay, wouldn't you just add a step eight? I mean, what is the need to add a higher paying tier? Because now, you're reclassifying a department head. But if there's no additional responsibilities or duties, where's the justification to reclassify as opposed to added additional step within their already tier?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, we've looked at this ourselves. We didn't create the tiered system. Quite frankly, it should probably start at one, as you had suggested, and go this way upwards. For what reason it starts at eight and comes down, I don't know the answer to that. But we have seven steps within each grid. So, that's the reason to have that other grid. This is going to possibly affect four to five people, and it's really about making sure that we keep people here. There are a few people that have been stuck at the top tier of DH01, and they don't get anymore, they don't get additional monies, other than a COLA adjustment, whichever may happen. What we've found with some positions, and some of the councils know this, and I really want to talk about individuals, but we had to adjust on the fly to try to even get somebody to come in on these, on some of these positions. And that's the reason to get to the DH00. Now, once again, I think DH01 should be the entry level going that way. We didn't create this, and I don't know why they started backwards, if you would.
Well, but see, my question is, instead of a DH00 tier, why wouldn't we be having a conversation over adding steps eight and nine to all tiers? So, that way, it opens up room for advancement within those tiers.
CFO.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the things that may be a little awkward about this proposal is that we're trying to fit this expansion within the confines of the existing ordinance language. So, the differential between the tiers and the steps and the number of steps is already set by ordinance. And so, rather than, I suppose one hypothetical option would have been to blow the whole thing up and to start over from scratch. But essentially, short of that, we're trying to squeeze in, which would give us the same flexibility. I think this is all about flexibility for the administration to better attract and retain employees by adding that additional tier on top, which, this may sound awkward, but you know, sometimes we have employees that get bunched up into these classifications, either because they've been here for a long period of time, or perhaps that particular position is in high demand in the market, and so, it has to be brought up a little bit. And so, this additional tier will allow the administration to better classify employees by, I keep wanting to say, a little more breathing room at the top. But by adding it to the top, it will also allow us to better classify within the other tiers, the existing employees, to meet the market, to meet the demands of the municipal workplace.
Fair enough. Thank you. And I mean, if you have the opportunity before you to rebuild and reclassify, why don't you just do like you were discussing, 00, start at the bottom and work your way up? I mean, that would, it seems like you have the opportunity before you right now, so it's going to a public meeting. Why not do it?
Thank you. You want to keep our talent, we already have, and not lose them, so. All right. To a public hearing on March 12th, all in favor, say aye, opposed, motion passes. Eight-point-two, wire inspection by Boston Gas, National Grid Requesting Installation of Geothermal Heat Exchange along Broadway, Wilder, Wark, and Wall Streets for service for UMass Lowell. Motion to accept and adopt the accompanying order.
I agree.
Motion by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Getche. All in favor, say aye, motion passes. Section nine petitions, nine-point-one claims, five property damage, motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Council Dakota, seconded by Council Chow, all in favor, say aye, motion passes. Nine-point-two, miscellaneous attorney George Theodoro for FTO Realty Trust, Stephen Doherty trustee, request extension of traditional two-family zoning district to include 3.8 acre site owned by trust at 71 North Bill record Road. Motion to refer to the Law Department for report and recommendation by Council Scott, seconded by Council Nun, all in favor, say aye, motion passes.
Your Honor.
I'm sorry, any questions on it? Council Scott.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, so at this point in time, that's all that we're doing is referring it to law, and that will, just so the public knows, because I've had quite a few people already reach out to me about this, they want to make sure that there's community input included and everything. So--
Motion to refer to Law Department.
So, this will go to the Law Department, it'll come back to us with the recommendation, and then to planning? Is that what it would, would it go to the planning board, or it just come right back to us for?
Mr. Manager.
Yep.
I guess what's the process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It does go to the planning board--
Okay.
--after the Law Department.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Council Leahy? Council Leahy?
Sure. Can I, I just want to make a comment on that, too. Not that it's a big deal, but I want a recorded vote of no on that because I think that too many of these issues are coming up before the boards, and they're taking advantage of certain neighborhoods, and they're overbuilding, and they're overcrowding. And I just want to be on the record right now saying no for that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call?
Can we do a roll call?
I think the council wants a roll call. Please.
Council Scott?
No.
Council Yem?
What are we voting on again? Sorry.
To the Senate, to the law department for a report and recommendation.
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
No.
Council Getchea?
No.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
No.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
No.
Mayor Rourke?
No. Motion fails. Nine point three, miscellaneous Johnny Atiega requests reimbursement for trust collection payments to the city for property located at 73 Aiken Ave. In motion to refer to the law department for report, motion to the law department for report and recommendation by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Dakota. Any questions? All in favor say aye, opposed, passes. Nine point four, miscellaneous Samuel Cavalo requests installation of a 15-minute parking sign in front of Amigos Convenience Store at the corner of Lilly Avenue and West Sixth Street. Motion to refer transportation engineer for report and recommendation by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Yem. All in favor say aye, all opposed, motion passes. Section 10, announcements. Mr. Manager? Oh, councilors first. Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make announcement to the public and also to the business owner that the City of Lowell, in conjunction with the Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, bring back the Munch Madness that will be starting a month long in March, starting March 1st through March 31st. All the patrons that are going to dine at local businesses and then spend $25 can take a pictures and upload it to the lowmunchmadness.com with their contact information. That will enter into a drawing that wins some prizes also to let the business owner knows if they would like to participate, please reach out to Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Mr. Manager, anything to add? All good? Do you want to say something? Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that opportunity. Counselors, I did receive something from Mast DOT, and I'm just going to read it as it was texted to me. A piece of the Southern Armored Steel Expansion Joint, which is located where the bridge meets the roadway, broke and was kicked up by the truck damaging the fuel tank. Temporary repairs were made Friday, with additional work completed by Sunday evening. A more permanent repair will be developed and implemented in the short term when more favorable weather conditions return. Work is continuing on the estimated $2 million repairs that commenced earlier in the winter, that are focused on replacing lateral bracing elements that were identified during the most recent inspection and replacing worn panels that are removed to undertake that work. Thus far, approximately 330 panels have been replaced, 150 sway braces have been replaced as part of this effort. I'll continue to stay with Mast DOT to find out the, any other further updates. But that was just sent just a few moments ago. Thank you.
Españo Teller completion would be nice, too, Mr. Manager. It'd be great if possible.
Thank you very much.
And motion to adjourn by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Leahy. Good night.